All well, friend. She is already on the high table. We would like to invite the Director General of the State Emergency Management Agency to the High Table of Peace. Apostle Okoa and please join the High Table of Peace. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please, a lot please will go round. Please do well to log in your name. We would like to invite the two state House of Assembly members, please. Honorable But they are here, they are not sitting on the high table. We want to recognize the twenty-four man House of Assembly members here. Right hand of the five square and and right hand of the old attack on. This apology is tonight. Thank you. Please don't struggle, don't struggle. It will get to everybody. Please, it will go round to everybody. Don't struggle. We have enough. Please, there's a lot list going around. Do well to log in your name. Do well to write your work and also your readable phone numbers. Please, readable phone numbers. It will go round. We have enough. Please. Don't struggle. It will go round. Please, don't struggle. At this point. We would like to also recognize with apologies, please, recognize the Paramount Roller, Kalabai Municipal and all the traditional rulers here. A very, very recognition, very special recognition. Thank you. All right, at this point in time, I will be calling for an opening prayer and that will be taken by no more than President Apostle James Hannah. Thank you very much, Daddy. Thank you very much. Please let me speak as we pray. Almighty God, Almighty God, our generation shall praise your name. 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 One more time, Almighty God, Almighty God, our generation shall praise your name. 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 As for Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the life of our state. We thank you for the life of our governor and the deputy governor. We thank you for the life of distinguished senator who has decided to come and discuss with his people in Kalabai Municipality. Thank you immensely for the life of the people of Kalabai Municipality. Thank you for sustaining us this far. Today, we are still serving a new month. The month that has come with hope, the month that has come with obliance men, a month that has come with changes. Thank you for taking care of Cross River State from the beginning of our campaign in 2023 and today we are all in the office. Today, your sponsor has come to deliver me to discuss with the people of Kalabai Municipality. Father, we cannot do anything without your strength. We pray for you to come and to protect over this meeting all the powers, the principalities, we come against them and let your spirit alone reign supreme. We want to see you in all activities till the end so that at the end all thanks will return back to you. Take preheavening for in Jesus mighty name I have prayed. Amen. And the trust say, please have a seat, have a seat. Thank you very much for coming. We have to say. Please don't struggle. It will get to everybody. We have enough. Please don't struggle. We have enough. It will get to everybody. Please don't struggle. It will get to everybody. We get plenty. It will reach everybody. See, we get enough. We even give two-two, but they will not there struggles. So we stop out. Please, if we continue like this, all right, straight to the point. Please, at this point in time, respectfully, I would love to call on our very own to give us an opening remark. Please stop the sharing for now. Stop the sharing for now. Stop this because you don't want to coordinate. You don't want to coordinate. Please. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. At this point in time, respectfully, I would love to call on our very own to give us an opening remark. No honor, the DGE Asukua Epeyon campaign, the standard himself. Please, the round of applause has a call to the microphone. No honor, Dan. Honorable Okua Edet Okua. ABC. ABC. River municipality. Municipality. Let me on behalf of the local community that foresaw this town hall meeting. Let me thank the leadership of our great party in Kalabai Municipality. You have been wonderful. I want to especially recognize the commissioners that are here on the high table. I'd like to recognize the state officers of my great party, being seated, chapter officers. I'd like to especially recognize the one chairman and the other four, one committee at the one level. Let me appreciate our royal fathers. They're wearing colorful attire. Well seated. We say, you are welcome, sir. Want to recognize the leadership of the ten wards of Kalabai Municipality that are here. We've seen our wonderful women and ladies. We say, welcome. The youths are here. They are the future of tomorrow. Welcome them. I recognize even those that are outside because you can see that this hall cannot take everybody. We want to say, you are all welcome. We are gathered here for a town hall meeting with our distinguished senator, Senator Asukua Epeyon, whom you gave the mandate to represent him and elect him as Nigerian. When we came around to your local government, we had traveled through the nodes and crannies of Kalabai Municipality. We met with our traditional partners. We met with the leaders of various offices. And I know Asukua Epeyon has committed himself by saying that when he gets to Abuja, he will give you an effective representative. He has shown you as yet. Put it all at the heart of it and he will bring it and bring it directly to you. Today, my special grace upon all my through his support and he has prayed to the very top floor. Senator Asukua Epeyon has gotten a singular privilege to represent us at that level. He is also representing us even at global platforms. He has collected and represented us to our state within and outside the source of this country. He has shown capacity. He has shown that he was willing and was ready and was prepared for the representation. Today, that place that he gave me has translated to concrete the fundamental strikes that we have in our various courts. Our various in Kalabai South. Not only in Kalabai South, but the highlight and grace of Sanse Dieteral District. Senator Asukua Epeyon, by the grace of God, has attracted strongest lights to the nodes and crannies of Kalabai Municipality. Senator Asukua Epeyon has facilitated groups that has been assailed in Kalabai Municipality. Senator Asukua Epeyon has he has supported them to function in their educational activities across the length and breadth of the federal universities, universities of this nation. Today, it is on record that Senator Asukua Epeyon has also facilitated from Southern Sanse Dieteral District a number of undergrad students to embark on foreign scholarships. They are all over Europe. Godspeed, Senator Asukua Epeyon. As we speak, it's on record that he has facilitated two medical outreach free programs. One was held here in Kalabai Municipality. The other one was in General Hospital, Akar Bar, where he even provided buses to carry our sick parents as sick sisters, brothers to that hospital, to our throne. Senator Asukua Epeyon has also provided and facilitated relief materials, medics even to the flawed victims within this local government, within the Southern Sanse Dieteral District. Senator Asukua Epeyon in the cause of his activities in the National Assembly, he has facilitated grant worth over two hundred million era to support our local business at the level of our community levels. Asukua Epeyon has done so many things that we cannot without him. For like he promised us that he was going there to give our power voice. He was going there to go into all the nodes and crannies of the agencies of government, commissions, department and ministries to attract what is asked you to cross the river state. Senator Asukua Epeyon is doing this in recognition of the fact that we have a vibrant and very effective government in Cross River State. Whatever he's doing is complementary to what Senator Prince Basierero Two has already done in Cross River State. We voted all of them into office. And Senator Basieroto is giving a new face to governance in Cross River State. If you move around the streets of Kalabai, we are wearing a new look. He's doing so much and because we elected the National Assembly members to go to Abuja to attract whatever they can attract there to assist the state government. And that is exactly what Senator Asukua Epeyon is doing in Cross River State, now in Sanse Dieteral District. Like he said, as he's going there, he will come back to speak with you, to discuss with you, to present his scorecard. We want to use this opportunity to appreciate him and to thank him because he did not put the rest of us to shame. We took him round. He committed himself and by extension, all of us were committed. We thank him because today he is here in Kalabai Municipality. We have gone around the other six of the local government areas in the south. We are here in Kalabai Municipality for him to give his account of stewardship for the past one year. He's here to speak with you. He's here to also listen to you. Going forward, the expectation is that you will look at the areas of your needs. You will tell him those things he has done well, the areas that you expect him to do more and as a political family, we believe and we trust in the leadership of Senator Basieroto. David is supported by Senator Asukua Epeyon, the other National Assembly members and even those that are appointed at the federal level. Our responsibility is to work as a family in order to meet the needs and the earnings of our people in Cross River State. So once again, I'd like to thank you for your prayers. I want to thank you for all your support. I want to thank you for coming out en masse to listen to your representative, your loving senator speak to you on his scorecard for the past three hundred and sixty-five days. Welcome and God bless you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think my DJ deserves a better round of applause than that. Thank you very much. At this point in time, we want to listen to our own. Please, with a clap of vision, let's make welcome the youngest senator in Nigeria today. A man putting light in the streets of Kalabai and beyond. Let's help me welcome no more than a very distinguished senator, Asukua Epeyon! ABC. ABC. Please permit me to stand on the post of falls that have been laid down today. First of all, I must recognize the high table, the honorable commissioners here on the high table, the member representing Kalabai Municipality at the State House of Assembly, other distinguished ladies and gentlemen here on the high table, to our royal fathers and the traditional institutions, my brothers and sisters. My dear Senator Asukua Epeyon, Senator representing Cross River South. Over the course of the campaigns in 2022 and early 2023, we went to all ten wards of Kalabai Municipality. We worked with you, we campaigned, we besieged you, we asked for your host. We came to this council hall several times to request your support and he gave us that support. And because of that support, we were elected into the red chambers of the National Assembly. Over the last three hundred and sixty-five days, we have worked for you, serving you. Two weeks ago, on the thirtieth of June of 2024, we clocked one year in office. And so the fulfillment of the promise that we made for the campaign trail when we said, as we are going, the next land you will see us will be the next campaigns. He said, we will come back regularly, meet with you, tell us what we have done. You will tell us what you had expected us to do. You'll correct us because we are working there for you. That is why we are here today. The work of a representative or a senator is threefold. One is lawmaking. The second is representation. The third is oversight. For the purpose of this town hall meeting, I don't think we need to delve into oversight. So I will focus on lawmaking and representation. The lawmaking is actually our primary responsibility to make laws for the country, to better the lives of the people of this country. In the area of lawmaking, over the course of the last twelve months, I have been able to push six bills on the floor of the Senate and as well as five motions. The bills that we have pushed are bills that positively impact the lives of our people here in Kalabai Municipality. From the Establishment Bill for the South-South Development Commission to the National Inland Waterways Amendment, the bills we push are bills that will affect our local economy and our people. In the area of motions, we have pushed motion
we have pushed motions of objects publicly important that have had far reaching implications in the governance and operations of this country. The motion that I am most emotional about, and I'd like to maybe delve shortly into, had to do with a young woman. Who could have been any of our daughters, could have been any of our sisters, could have been our wife. This young lady at the close of work entered a car as she was going home. Unfortunately for her, it was only called one chance operators. They robbed her, they injured her, and they threw her out of the moving vehicle. A good Samaritan picked her, took her to the general hospital. On getting there, the doctors requested for a police report. In the process of obtaining that report, that young lady bled to death and died at that hospital. When I heard that story, I immediately drafted a motion. I presented it on the floor of the National Assembly and we had far reaching prayers. Depending on that motion, we summon the police force, we summon the Ministry of Health, we summon the hospital. And because of that motion and their awareness and the drive from that motion, the Inspector General of Police immediately released signals and directives to all police formations in this country, informing them not to request for police reports, as well as the Ministry of Health to all general hospitals sending them three, immediately and promptly beaten to gunshot or emergency room without requesting for police reports. I believe that that motion one day can save anybody in this room or their family. So when we push in the lawmaking aspect and the motion aspect, we think about things that affect our people but they are done to cover the entire Nigeria. The second responsibility of your senator is representation. And that is the one that has to do with you. It is personal to the people of Kalabam Municipality. And that is what I would help you to do. In the area of representation, I operate on that four pillars. The first is healthcare. Health is wealth. That is the primary thing you must keep any man or woman. Without health, you can't go to work, you can't go to farm, you can't go to school, you can't even interact with your family. If you are sick and bedridden, it is the most depressing thing that can happen to any man or woman. So as much as possible, the primary keys you can give someone is a good health, a sound mind and a sound body. And that is why it is number one of my pillars. So far over the last one year, we've been able to do two medical programs. One that was done right here in Kalabam Municipality at the Women and Children Hospital. Another was done just two weeks ago in Akapba, another federal constituency. The third will go on and that will most likely be in the next federal constituency and then we'll rotate it back to this federal constituency of Kalabam Municipality. We will try and do as many of these free programs as possible. The three programs that happened, there are free surgeries, free eye surgeries, and yeah, what have you. You have people, just two weeks ago, we saw a man who could not see for several years. They performed the surgery, the next day they took off the bandage and this man had sight. But that's not just the most important thing. That man who made the delivery, he had a guy who was a small girl. Because his sight is now given, that young girl can now go to school and have a future. That is the importance of work. But we also know that health situations or ailments are not scheduled. They are not scheduled. They may not happen in September. You don't plan to fall sick in October when there will be a health free medical program. So what we need to do is to work with the state government. The state government, or the state government, this administration, led by His Excellency Senator Prince Basierero II, is doing fantastic well. Fantasticly well in the area of healthcare. We are going to work with them to see how we can augment, equip and possibly rehabilitate some of our health centers such that they can provide medical services to you more often and frequently. That is in the area of healthcare. The second pillar is education. If I am anything today is that I am a product of quality education. As much as possible, the best gift you can give to any young man or woman is a solid education. Everyone in this country deserves it. Everyone in Kalabam Municipality deserves it. At the primary level, at the secondary and at the tertiary level. And we know the hardships in the economy today. So what we did last year, we saw a lot of requests for assistance in tuition at the tertiary institution level. We set up a program, it was called Educational Support. We worked with the House of Assembly member and some other leaders in the local government. But we also put the notice online. We put it on the internet such that young men and women in our tertiary institutions went online. They applied for this educational support program. At the end, we called them, we had a program here in Kalabam Municipality and we directly credited the beneficiaries to assist and augment their tuition fees. Beyond that, we also realized that today, beyond your first degree, the postgraduate degree is important. And now in Nigeria today, most of our contemporaries in other states are going out of the country to get postgraduate degrees. The federal government has institutions that awards foreign scholarships, whether it's the PTDF, whether it's the NDTC, and so on and so forth. What we've been able to do is we find those are young men and women who have applied for this scholarship. We assist and facilitate to ensure that they are beneficiaries of it. Today, we can speak to some young men and women from the Southern Senatorial District that are over there in Europe pursuing their postgraduate degrees, a foreign scholarship which was tied at about $40,000 for the session. Right now, we are in the process of also assisting more of our young ones to ensure that they benefit from these scholarship programs. That way, they go there, they build themselves, develop themselves, come back and be of value to not just their family but to their community and to this local government. That is what we are doing in the area of education. The third, which is as important, is economic empowerment. The ability to assist people to grow their business, expand their business a little bit. When I campaign, I remember from word to word, I always said, I don't want to be a representative for a senator that will be giving fish. I would like to be the guy that teaches you how to fish, equip you on how to fish and give you the capital to not start your fishing. That is the true empowerment we can give anyone. So far, we have started small. We started small with a few programs. We had tailored most of our interventions to grants, giving grants, micro-small grants, grants ranging from 50,000 to 100,000 to 200,000. Over the course of this year, we've done that program three times, awarding across the seven local governments the equivalent of 200 million naira grants to beneficiaries. However, we find that it is more important that we tailor our intervention in empowerment to suit the capabilities or the needs of our constituents. For instance, there is no point giving someone in transport business a sewing machine. You rather tailor that and find a tailor or a sister, give her one or two sewing machines to expand our business. A man that is doing transport business, you can give him a mini boss where he can attack, he can expand his business. Someone that is in the restaurant business, you can give him a deep freezer to expand his business. These are the kind of things we want to do. So we are going to tailor up our empowerment to be more specific to our people, their needs and their businesses. That is what we intend to do as we tailor. Thank you. The last but not least of our pillar is infrastructure. Today, if you drive around Kalabam, you can see how Kalabam has changed. The governor of Cross River State, His Excellency Senator Prince Basierero II, has invested heavily in infrastructure renewal here in Kalabam Municipality. The state capital is looking new, it's looking brand new. Everywhere you see some work going on, rehabilitation or new construction. For us, when we came to you, we presented ourselves as a team. When we came to campaign, we said it was five of our five of our and that five of our five is a team. The number one on that team is President Bola Ahmed. Number two on that team and number one in the seat is Governor Basierero II. I am on that team as your senator. You have the House of Reps member. He may not be of the same party but he's representing you and he must work for you to his identity member. We have the House of Assembly member here standing in front of SBN, Boyz Prince, who is part of that team. The whole point of the team is that anybody that watches to follow knows that not one man can score a goal to win a match. You must pass the ball, that's how the team works. So we are a team, we are working together. The state government is doing its utmost at the state level to develop our infrastructure. We were sent to Abuja to intervene such that there are federal government agencies, ministries, departments, commissions, that ought to intervene in terms of infrastructure in your local government. Our job is to identify them, lobby them, bring them down and ensure that they intervene such that whatever they do in the city or in Portacor, Kusokoto, Okano or Kaduna, we will ensure that they do here in Kalabam Municipality. That is our job. So in the area of infrastructure, we've been able to intervene in some areas. In Kalabam Municipality in specific, there was a full reconstruction of the Vol 3 road. There was a full reconstruction of Inkot and Kebre. We started the reconstruction of Etemo 2. Along the way, I believe the State Ministry of Works has taken over that and is working hard on that. There are numerous to mention. There's ongoing works at Federal Housing on Road 4. And last but not the least, we have decided and I've gotten the directive of the government to intervene in the road at Iyagasa. Iyagasa, that is going to come up very soon. Going to be done very well. Beyond that, we have, beyond building the road, we also intervene in the area of solar lights. Because we who gives light drives away darkness. Darkness cannot drive in light. And so we have intervened aggressively in the area of solar lights to light up our communities, to drive away crime and to strengthen the security of this local environment. We have been going from word to word, community to community. So far, we've done installations of about 2,500 streetlights here in Kalabam Municipality. I want to assure you, we will come to every word and community by the grace of God and we will continue to do this until the rule of Kalabam Municipality is right. At this point, I think we've been able to show or say most of the things we've done. But that's not what we are here for today. We are not here to talk about what we've done. We're here to present ourselves that we want to hear from you because the problems in this our community, in this local government is more than you can envisage. We like to hear how better we can serve you. If you don't have a problem, you can tell us how better we can serve. We want to know because service is two-way, it's a two-way communication. You tell us, we go, we implement, we come back, we listen to you, we go somewhere. So this is the start of that communication. This is the first town hall meeting we are having. By the grace of God, we will continue to have more during the course of this term. Everything you hear, we are being here, communicate it back, we'll go back and we'll sit down with the leader of our party and the state governor. That's the governor of the state, His Excellency Basierero II, and say this is what your people have said in Minister's Power. These are the things that need to be done. Thank you very much and I look forward to hearing from you, governor.
Not being by Senator, you go clap for that. Thank you very much. Now, let's do something very simple for our people. We get to hear from you. Everybody go, go tell. Now, when I start to for the video, we start this time. Are we good? Asukwa Epeyo! Asukwa Epeyo! Alright, at this point in time, we get to hear from you. The main reason why we are here. Alright, to for good, we're the GIs, like to, like to speak on behalf of your party. Okay, so I'd like to call on the leader of Womong to be honest, to speak on behalf of your work. Please, two minutes, two minutes, for two minutes, just two minutes. Please, leader of Womong, please. Imanwale Uwam, Womong is the leader of Womong, who is representative.
ABC! ABC! And I'm speaking on behalf of Womong in Kalabam Municipality. And I want to start first by appreciating our we have seen your work in all two roads that borders around the university area. And we are encouraging to do more. We appreciate all you have done. We have stations and best towards night in every area of city. Do you have, do you have?
It's a two minutes!
Okay, let me stop along the road. There's more. ABC! So, in Womong, we are still having some little areas that we leave there and sit down. And this is the area that takes you from Kalabam to and takes you down instead of actually Ecometan. There's a small street which will brought you in Ecometan. You pass through that street and move into Marian. And there will be this one just along Ivy Way. And if that is done, it will give you that contract. And then another place that is not a very great concern in Womong is uh, Boras Street. Boras Street was one of them. They're somewhere along the line. It was abandoned. And Boras Street turned to a building. You, you be, be here, Ivy Way and Ivy Way and the east side of Akam, you have Boras Street. And it is completely bad, sad. We will appreciate in that area when you take us there.
Thank you.
Boras Street, sad. And then we have
Thank you, sir, please, yeah, just a minute, please, thank you. Thank you. To speak for one too, I'd like to invite DJ Samba, Apostle James, Anai. Thank you. Two minutes. For one too, I want to go straight. We have a problem, we have a very strong problem, infrastructure problem in Abakan that's Abakan Lane that leads to a tap or layout. We also have very serious infrastructural problem in Goldie area. The internal roads of Goldie. And internal roads of Goldie. The highway is part of it. Now, we have problem because it includes security threats in this party. Now, we have problem because it includes security threats in this party. So we need roads in this party. Yes, we need roads in this party. And also, when we get down to Victory Way, we have a goal in Victory Way, that satellite town. So we need posts, we need, we need those places to be opened up. We have transformer problem, you take it easy now. We have transformer problem in Abakan, for the past five, five years, they've not had light. In satellite town, for the past seven years, they don't have light. So we need, we need to have, we need to have all of this put in place. Thank you for how far you have gone. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. To speak for Watan, we'd like to invite Intu Fana, Pastor, Adam.
ABC! ABC! This is Senator, sir. Watan, you, there are numerous, numerous letters in the office already for requests. There is issue, you mentioned the road at Iyagasa, thank God, the governor has given that direction. There is a terrible goli in Iyagasa that is threatening people's residents very seriously. In fact, as of December, there was a letter forwarded from that community for the purpose of that goli. Some buildings have already been taken. So please, we wish that that goli, we will, we look after. Along, seeing around Iyagasa, there are some areas where there are provision for a, a street lighting, but it's grossly inadequate. Within Iyagasa area, the area is quite populated and there's a challenge of, uh, light supply. So there's need for more transformer there so that there will be equitable distribution of, uh, power to the residents there. In the, in the Barwin, we have one of the oldest primary health center in Edama. It is in a very sunny states. And this is a structure that can be used and, you know, take, it can take care of the health need of quite a number of persons within Kalabang, what we want to find in Kalabang Municipality, if we approach the proper perspective. There is a problem of street light in Edama. Streetlight project has commenced, but they have not been completed. In fact, the installation that was started is of the, the, uh, substructural work that is being done there. The, the poles have not been mounted. Again, we need, we have a problem of transformer within Jahas, Atikong and Middle Edama. There's a problem in that area in terms of transformer. So we need to, you know, see how we give them those little ones that are supplied. We expect they don't can come as fast as possible, that we're constructing work. So for me to, not to waste too much time, I want to think that, uh, BBC, those are the basic things that are very near, we just want to, to want Kalabang Municipality, thank you.
Thank you. To speak for Watan, representative of Watan, Congreg, please, sir, please.
ABC! ABC! Your family, your family, my distinguished senator, members of the head table, the royal father, as I'm here, please permit me to stand on the already established protocol. Your coming here is a confirmation that yes, the youth have more than enough capacity to deliver. And for those of us that traverse all the loose equipment of Kalabang Municipality and the dark south side of the street, I want to tell you that you have made us proud. Keep it up. Talking for Watan, sir, there is a road known as Ita Okan. For those of us that know Ita Okan, it is an adjoining road that surround a very important place we call Itongpoa. In fact, that's the four roads, the adjoining roads are not even treasurable, nonetheless of being motorable. And we know that you have more than enough capacity. There's a lot we call, uh, Omori So, Omori So of Yawesu, the road is more than bad. Understand? In con- a continuation of the street lighting. As far as Watan is concerned, because Watan is where almost all the former governors and even current governors stays, a lot of areas like Popora, Old Marian and even Old Okan that takes you through Marian Hotel, as a, to the airport first, they are dark as you may want to think. And most of the time, when we have criminal activities, that is where they use as their escape route. We know that we have so much enough capacity and we know that definitely you will do it. On that, let me finalize by saying that though you get the traditional rulers waiting for more than two hours, uh, please, next time, if it's a humble appeal, we will give them two. We will give them two PM and we, we're here before two PM. That is how we operate in Kalabang Municipality. So please, of that, we are willing to appeal to you that whatever you are doing, because you are racing out, but you may not sustain as expected, ensure that, please, you factor in transformer distribution into what you are doing because you are closer to the people. Please, before I drop this mic
Thank you.
Sorry, sir, before I drop this mic, I want to say that the distinguished senator, let me now speak as the chairman of Chief Staff, one of the leaders of Watan, that the youth, let, please, we are the ones on the field, a lot of women and youth that work so hard are yet to be captured, please consider the justice.
Congreg, sorry. Congreg, sorry. To speak for Watan, we'd like to hand over the microphone to the leader of Watan, Captain Oto, especially the vice president, Marit Sanyi.
ABC! ABC! Uh, my distinguished senator, you have done so well. You have done so well to Watan. I think right from the beginning of the, uh, the position of doing the right, apart from Prince Vati Edele who, when he was a senator, he's only person we are helping with. When Prince Vati Edele was a senator, he did too well. And this is the next senator we have seen, he's talking to a young man, who is free, he loved to make the youth, the elders, the traditional guys happy. He was fighting, you have done well. You have helped, you have done well to talk about it, to take your life. You have done well to help with any other thing, what will miss you. Right, I want to say to you, my senator, we have problem in Watan. The problem here in Watan is transformer. Transformer and good roads. I'm appealing, if you can give us at least three kilometer long road to spread around the four, four road, Equinium, Isheeta, Diamond and Obuto. We need at least three kilometer road. And also the street light, we have done in Watan, it's not, not blues
They need street lights, this is the street lights, so that's the needed electricity. The Kasup area of Watan, uh, they have issue of transformer and they also need street lights. Because of that, in, uh, Watan, they have issue of, uh, street lights too. And internal roads, if you can assist us and do some internal roads, I will be really appreciative. Thank you very much, for everything.
Thank you.
And, and please, our youth doing Watan, uh, needs, uh, bad, you see that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Watan, please. We'd like to invite the rest of the party to get there to speak. ABC!
Let me join, yeah, thousand and one of your supporters to say thank you for this purpose. And Watan, we know it's like a headquarters of Kalabang Municipality. Now, I say it's like, you can say yes or no. Please, listen, that is where you have the Nigerian Ports Authority. That's where you have the EEP there. I'm not talking about the famous, said, but it's for is it zone six, is it able to balance? What else do you, you want me to say? Thank you. You having said that, let me tell you, sir, the man who helped to bring Nigerian Ports Authority to Kalabang, he is still in the north. His son is here, he's standing here, Doctor Goo. They helped to bring Nigerian Ports Authority to Kalabang for about six months now. Yeah, so one year now, there is no transformer in Ebro to balance. My law, zone two of Kalabang Municipality would be very happy to have legislative aid maybe to the standing chairman, house of whatever, not even to be the sitting president. Because we know from one up to, there's a two, absolutely. Please, take that into consideration. Thank you very much. Mister Senator, sir, we have in Kalabang Municipality, Watan, veterans, we have the ex-chairman of the local government, it is Maurice E. Prince of, he has been a dedicated man in this business, he has not been there. He's not a single servant, he has not been there, he has not to be seen. Thank you, sir. We have ex-commissioner, a person of Bishop, also is that Watan, and of course, my humble servant, Abosel of Watan. Mister Senator, please consider, please round off. Let me round off by saying that in the present economic situation, certification is very important. And we are from a war that we have industry, we have industry. So please, take into super consideration, interfacing with so many of the companies in Watan to help our youth, to help our youth engage in the business of the ABC, of the oil, of everything in the world.
Thank you, thank you.
Mister Senator
Thank you.
My people have assisted me to say a word, we have issues of words, thank you very much.
Thank you. Those three on behalf of Watan, we'd like to hand over the microphone to the honorable commissioner for social welfare, Bishop, and
Thank you very much. This distinguished senator, every other critical of them, we thank you for the light that you gave to us in Watan, but we want to say it's not enough. Ikone Fana is still in darkness, the technical community is in darkness, part of Ikone Nowo is still in darkness. We also want to make it known to your office that, that infrastructure of roads, we have the area of the slaughter, the road there is very bad and that slaughter is being used by everybody, even our ADC chairman. We want to say here that the road round, you know, Ikone Nowo Zone, Lion Gate, Akala, Ura Akaba Hill, uh, Ifana, Ifana, Inta Group, that all very bad, very bad.
Thank you very much. Distinguish Senator, every other critical of them. We thank you for the light that you gave to us in Wat8, but we want to say it's not enough. Ikola Fana is still in darkness. The technical community is in darkness. Part of Ikola N'Gomu is still in darkness. We also want to make it known to your office, that the infrastructure of roads. We have the area of the slaughter. The road there is very bad. And that slaughter is being used by everybody, even our ADC chairman. We want to say here, that the road round, you know Ikola N'Gomu Zone, Lion Gate, Akaba Hill. Ifana, Ifana. Intagro, that all very bad, very bad. Very bad. I also want to make it known, that we have gully and roadshow that have been swallowing people's houses. In Ikola Fana. And it's along Ayayide, Ayayide Kiyoskri opposite Wahyek. Opposite Wahyek, it has done a lot of damages. And we will appreciate it if it is attended to. Also to bring to your notice, that canon gas need urgent government intervention. The road of canon gas, re- needs urgent intervention. And I want to say here, that we have a lot of youths in that community. And now that some revenue points that they were depending on have been shut down, I think we should teach them how to fish. So that we may not give them fish. So if you will consider the youths and the women in Wat8, we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to hand over the microphone to representative of the traditional org. Wat8, sorry, Chief, stand with him. No, I'm always there. Siaro. Calabar Municipality, thank you.
EPC, EPC. It's the best time that exists in Portugal, the distinctions so far. I want to criticize this special for all that we have done for everyone. Let me just go straight to the point. Sir, you've been doing solar nights. You've done it everywhere you have stayed. God bless. I want to draw your attention that Wat8, at this stage one. But tonight, I'm just glad we have it. So please, take notes. Because you are away, and you raised it once in the National Assembly, the road show menace in Wat8. We took you down there, and you entered company, and you raised that issue in National Assembly. The power to have no intervention, sir, is done for Wat8, sir. I want to also draw your attention, sir. There is one particular area community, Calabar Municipality, I think is the heart of its capital. But I tell you, sir, Nasaraa Apen Yor Ekabu Road is the problem. We have never tested an asphalt since the creation of buses became too small. Not that it was small asphalt and it got bad. That road has never tested what asphalt. Please, sir. And that is Nasaraa Ekabu Apen Yor. And that is a food basket of Calabar Municipality. We have a lot of streams there, fishes that come out from there, that feeds that of the Calabar Municipality. Please, sir. That is a very serious problem. And they become, in the time past, they become a headquarter of kidnappers and criminals. Because they were not accessible for police to patrol. So they come from the river and harbor there, and come into the river. The policing people are carrying out all their various activities. So please, and we have applied several to entities in the past administration that no effect of the law. Because we were advised, that we should try to put it in the next budget, budget upon budget. So as a chairman of entities, I think that can go instantly by putting the budget as entities. Sir, again, a sick man on other parts of the country. You don't start, you don't have any progress. Please, sir, transformer equal, we also do well, sir. We really need government intervention. We are trying, please, sir, use the good offices. And the House of Assembly member, we are also trying with the government as well. Please, sir, the area you can intervene, intervene for his causes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This moment is for representative of the traditional organization, there's so many things, thank you.
I'm thinking, my name is Sam. I think this is the future. Well, I'm sorry. Well, did I ask you? That appreciation of. Deep War is very, very, a very ugly illness. And this is the sickness of the government process, to develop a casualty, very useful. We have city nights all over, this is after. And that's like before, God bless. Please, we have a program, please, thank you, thank you, please.
Our distinguished speakers, I hope people react. My name is Sessi, I'm great at this. The position of my kind of company. And I'm so happy today, because I will be the president, and I will be the president, China distinguished. That is why I'm here to talk. There is no mistake. My representative, please, do you have anything to do to the community? Not just take it to the traditional org. Not just share and give to like, example. Like the street. In that kind of way, you're not giving like a first statement. I guess I told it. Fun, because when they get the street, like I saw with people. They didn't run over, in primary school, I, we had to, we had to. Because many get money for the security. Because of the small life. I don't know why. They don't want to say this. We are not the Twitter. Even the women, the women. That type of thing, they might tell you this, it's obvious, for the windows. They, they. Nothing will even say. I mean, when I did it, don't you. Really practice me up to make play. I got the women, so it's difficult to find plans. That was what we are want to see. Our women are so free. Even our charging, our. I don't know why you make no work. We are loving it, thank you.
Have women as wives, mother, or girlfriend. In the story, we have not called women to speak. On that note, please, let me invite the representative of the women, Elise Ben Awat, to come and speak for the hour of women. If you. All right.
We are so happy to, happy to hear with us. Thank you.
The total development, yes, there are places in municipality where students still sit on the floor. There are places in municipality where there is no healthcare centre, primary or secondary, where women still need to go miles in order to access primary healthcare. Am I lying? Where is Dr. Odey? Where former Digi? Digi Primary Healthcare, what you name? Are they lying? Are they lying? So there's a lot of issue because the problem in municipality, because everybody drives on highway and they see how nice the road is. If they enter into inner, inner roads, you will find out that we have a huge road deficit. Very huge road deficit. And then, I don't even want to talk about the employment. For some reason, when the appointment comes to municipality, the people of Kalabang Municipality do not have it. It is not our people directly, and we welcome, we welcome everybody, but you must first of all feed yourself before you can eat. I believe that if we can provide, even if it's from the state level or the federal level, like Awat said, my essence, we have everything, we have PhD holders, we have master's degree holders, we have this all municipality, intelligent people, we deserve an opportunity to rise up. Then lastly, my senator, um, coming to the distribution, the financial, the financial support that you've been giving to the municipality, I would suggest for me that the royal fathers, the traditional rulers and various leaders, it's not of the forum should be created where they can have an impact. Because most of the time, when this money come, nah, audio, we know this down for ground. Nah, audio, do this down for ground, still. And we know and we are proud of you, Senator, we see all your accomplishments today. We feel so much that we truly promise this development, we promise them a better life, we promise them that we will do better. Please, whatever it is, whatever it is, please sir, let us try and do better. I will compile the list with all the leaders of all the things that have been said and all the areas that we need intervention, and I will forward things to your office, Senator, so that the things that we have forgotten here and the places that we have forgotten here will be captured. I can't go to the land, bro. I can't go to the land, so.
Thank you, ESPN. Like to call the last, but not the least, Honorable Commissioner, Mineral Resources, Honorable ESG, the Canada, this kid on behalf of all the citizens.
Thank you very much, it will drop low. The Royal Fathers, distinguished Senator, our political evangelist, and great specialist. My appointees here present, Bishop and Councilman, and distinguished, you done so well, you are actually a perfect pair to see the dog with fast and dead foot. Sincerely speaking, we've seen, we've heard, but like right starting to say more, I just say there is actually a discordant. This is this in the door, I was a state leader of ABC and I know because I've been receiving. I know the things that people ask me for, please do us well to fight for employment for us. Distinguished Senator, I said to you leader of ABC, I can remember vividly that in 2018, I fought and secured 10 jobs from Zana Pabu, who's alive, personally, using the office of the very active nationalist chairman of ABC to familiarize them. Please do that for us. Times are hard and you're actually a round peg in a round hole in the national assembly. Please do get our people jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you guys, I'd like to hand over to the MC of the team. Thank you. Alright, at this point in time, we have heard all what you said, and let us here respond from the Senate, please a round of applause for distinguished Senator and support a prayer as they respond to all these most requests. Thank you very much. ABC. He is funny. The ABC. One hour. ABC. Please try and so that you can hear from me. Are we together? Please allow me to address what has been said. Thank you very much. Let me start by acknowledging that we have heard from the people. Over the last one and a half hours, or or thereabouts, or at least one hour, I've been sat here and I have made extensive notes. And most of the issues across the world are more or less the same things. Internal roads, more distribution and facilitation of solar light for our communities. The issue of rehabilitation, furnishing and equipment of our secondary schools, of our health centres, those are issues that are replicated across the ten wards of Kalabang Municipality. Issues of the ocean control, flood control, they are replicated. But what we have done is to get the exact locations and areas and effects, the various ones. Now, issues are not always solved in one thing. In fact, if you finish all your problem, we are not for me, Senator, again, Ali. So maybe I don't want myself out of work, but the, the thing is, we have noted all you have said. We will go, we will work hard on it. If I want to be specific, uh, in word one, my brother and former ex-colleague spoke about Boras Street. In word two, the American Coca-Cola spoke about Akbar Hassan Lee and charbonne issues. Word three, my senior brother Cooper spoke about the ocean control and former solar light sector, etc. Word four, solar light road, word five, spoke about the same issue, but more specifically, the specific issue he spoke about was more or less in regards to training of our youth in the area of the maritime sector. That has been noted, we'll see how we can work with you, the Maritime Academy, or even the mass, we see how we can train our young ones in maritime skills. Word six, Savaba spoke about Ikonua Village, the transformer, only potion for two streets. Word seven, Opoa spoke about the color five transformer, Ikona water, solar light, car soup. Internal road, fuel, employment, all noted. Word eight, the biggest wall in Kalabang Municipality. No, Mr. He spoke about why one eight is the biggest one, he spoke about MBA, April to Varan, he said, he forgot the main thing every politician wants to hear, it is the one with the greatest number of registered voters in Kalabang Municipality. How, no, Mr. So we believe that one eight is very scary. And we, one of the proponents towards the head of the last administration that pushed, I think at that point, one eight didn't have a single appointee, while it's a senior appointee, and we did attempt to push for that. However, we noted the issues we brought it from employment, internal routes, transforming issues, they are all well noted. Word nine, word nine, I don't have appointee, I can only speak on that. But we speak on that, but you see the greatest, yeah, see the man, who has all the power, and, and don't hate, this is the eighth of the town hall meeting, where the country's house person at Kalabang Municipality, the chairman of the party has this. And that is the force, the headquarters of the party in Kalabang Municipality. And so, again, yeah, it's not that, it's not that it's leading to those other local events, because the headquarters of the ABC in Ros River is in Kalabang Municipality, that is why it's here. So going on script B, we had a lot of issues with word nine, from water to solar lights, and I was very shocked to hear, um, the speaker said that there had been no intervention in terms of solar lighting, word nine, was that word nine or word ten? Word ten. But word nine, we had to repeat a lot of intervention in income level, but we will, it is noted and we will do, we will do more. There's no, everything is noted, you don't need to repeat what was said, but everything is well noted. In word ten, she's standing in here, spoke very well on behalf of the people of word ten. Yes, indeed, one of my first motions acted, my second motion was in regards to the ocean damage and uh, erosion control, the environmental disaster waiting and people go for bid in the area in national law community. And we've been pushing on that very aggressively and we've taken in love with, uh, uh, the Secretary to Government of the Federation, the office, um, the ecological office, which is situated there, we will post it even more aggressively after this talk. Thank you for the reminder. The traditional ruler spoke and spoke very delicately. He spoke in regards to the furnishing and equipping of traditional council hall, spoke to regards of the roots around the policies of the in living. And someone, he mentioned the speech by saying that people is a sort of government, but it is a modern village. Um, that is something will come to gate across the state government and see what areas of the traditional we can do. And just before, uh, the designated speaker for the women came, the village head of Apeka Edward, over all that came up and spoke both on behalf of the traditional institution and on behalf of the women. As he spoke very well, and we are hearing. Um, I think that Awat came out and spoke dramatically on behalf of the women. I think after today, we are going to give her the title comrade because she is the real agitator for the women. In fact, because of her and because of Opoama and the agitation, women that did. Women, you good? Okay, I've got another question in, uh, about 10 seconds. But because of all this agitation, the next grant department program we do is going to be a duty thing for women. Women, you good? You fine? I need to pay. Don't pay me. So that will come on very shortly. But our brother and sister, our brothers, please, know that they are your wife, they are your daughter, they are your sister. Tell everything ready, she has to enter house, no, Mr. I think, uh, we have addressed most of the issues and we dealt with most of the issues. Uh, my brother, the honorable Commissioner for Mineral Resources, spoke eloquently about employment. We will try. And brother, if you know, if you know what we do, you can approach for employment in Abuja. It's limitless, and we do get some encouraging, uh, times. Recently, the police, um, recruitment came out, some of the names we sent have been published. Some of the agencies of the federal government, it's a, it's a struggle. For months in a while, you get two year, you get three year, maybe I'll avail you on the list of people who will be able to employ over time, maybe that will help us and help you able to assess better. We don't like to blow our own horn, but we like to do that till I receive. In regards to my brother Stanley said, but remember representing Kalabang Municipality in the House of Assembly. There's, we've done three programs for this grant, he said something to audio. What I will do, I will unveil to you the list of all the beneficiaries in Kalabang Municipality. You call them and verify whether or not we sell it, the demand will show you the transaction receipt. So that people will stop, no, so that people will stop saying it's not received because we have it. That was the first program we did. We worked with the bigger bits we had of people in Kalabang Municipality. This, when that was done, we had complaints, so the second time, we handed it over to the stakeholders of Kalabang Municipality. They compiled the list and said to us, we will carry it there. So that's exactly, one hour, one hour, one hour, I am telling you, brother, you know. I stand this level on part of the people that did that list, and they started to go and repeat this thing. So we will let that is public to you, so that you see, so that now people stop pushing it. So now today, they send you to work with traditional institutions. Our royal fathers will come to you for list of beneficiaries, have that today, please your idols. Are you okay? See here, ABC. We'll tear that because it's part of the problem. ABC. One hour, one hour, one hour. One hour, one hour. Let me tell you something that you don't get, yeah? Leadership is very hard, it's a difficult thing. Because when you try like this, the people that benefit today will make noise, you come this way, they will complain, they will complain. So we will get it right. One thing is for sure, is our house is in the right place. These things have always been there, some other people, they sit on it, they play it, they participate. At home, we are releasing whatever is for the people, we give it to the people. What we now need to do is put our house in order, so that whatever is there for the people, it comes to you people and stop people giving names and maybe they descend this way and people complain. What we will be doing, no, we publishing a list of beneficiaries of any deal. And I'm going to go back from the first program we did to the second program, to the third program, I'm going to publish this at their house. ABC. God bless me, thank you very much. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, for, for for a remark, I'd like to, um, hand over the microphone to the political evangelist, the state chairman of the ABC, Barista Alfonso Oka, the man. ABC. I can't hear him very well. ABC. The distinguished Senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Our pride, our representing that is speaking of fully, very happy. Members of the State Executive Committee of ABC here present, the chapter chairman, Kalabang Municipality. The honorable member of the House of Assembly, honorable Commissioner here present, senior government appointee, are very respected and reverend royal fathers. I especially recognize my godfather of almost twenty something years ago in the University of Merubri, Dr. Eric Bassey, Red Lotter. The lady that spoke on behalf of women, please start off the game, let me look at you very well. I, I want to start with you, say that. I would have loved by starting with a thank you, but I will not start with a thank you in municipality. Don't worry. I have not come to tell you things that will make you happy, but I have come to tell you things that will make you very happy tomorrow. But the starting point will be that we go back to start. And that is one legacy. All of you gather that we were all united in Cross River State.